Okay, it's just a little after four. We're going to go ahead and call the August 10th Salina City Commission meeting to order. Thanks for those who have been waiting. We had another engagement that we just got back from. With that, I would ask staff if confirmation that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided.
Yes.
Thank you. With that, we will have roll call.
Mayor Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Fran.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges. And Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Okay, with that, would all that are able please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the Republic of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have no awards and proclamations. With that, we will have Citizens Forum. This is an opportunity for individuals to come forward and discuss anything that is not on the agenda. With that, we will open it up to the public. And please state your name and address if you would.
I'm Janet Carlson. I live at 406 South Estates Drive here in Salina. I would like to bring the no visitors ban in our nursing homes, assisted living facilities, and other care facilities in our community to your attention. This ban was put in place to protect our most vulnerable loved ones from the COVID-19. It is doing this physically, but their emotional and mental health has been ignored. Many of them are in rapid decline. They are afraid, confused, depressed, and feeling abandoned. My mom and stepdad are among this population. My parents live in an assisted living facility due to a stroke my mom had. She needed more help than my husband and I were able to give her at home. Dad chose to go with her so they could be together. He has since developed dementia and is in an advanced stage. They receive excellent physical care, but there are emotional needs that only family can meet. Dad recently broke his hip. After a stay in a hospital, he was moved to a nursing home with a rehab unit. He is scared, confused, lonely, and missing mom desperately. While visiting through a window yesterday, he started crying. He wanted to go home to be with mom. All I could do was try to comfort him with words. No hugs, no holding hands, nothing. Because they can't be done through a window. This is no way to take care of our loved ones' emotional needs. Later in the day, I called my mom on the phone. She also started to cry as she desperately misses dad and is worried about him. Again, all I could do was try to comfort her with words. No hugs, no holding hands. Even if I had been doing this during a window visit, it would not have been, it would have been just the same. This is just a small example of what our loved ones are going through with this no visitor ban. Please help us get this repealed. At the very least, allow our loved ones one designated essential visitor to help them through this devastating isolation.
Thank you, and I'm sorry for what you're going through. I also have a mother at Eagle Crest, and I know it is, it's hard on all of us, so, and I, so, okay. Do we have anyone else?
Dalton McDowell, 914 South Ninth. Thank you, Commissioners, and thanks, Mike, and the Tony's Pizza Event Center staff and everybody that cleaned up Kenwood Cove's this weekend. There's still a lot more to be done there, but it looks a lot better. And another thing, with that Tony's Pizza deal that you guys just got back from, why was, how was that voted on Thursday, and they had the thing today? How did they know it was going to get passed in the council? That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Sherri Jackson, 513 East Club. I'm going to read a letter that I sent to each of you, and I've only heard back from Mr. Ryan. And I was acknowledged by, I don't know, there's another one. Are some people missing today? Melissa?
Commissioner Hodges.
Okay, okay. She acknowledged it. Okay, I'm writing as a resident of Salina. My concern about your overreach during the COVID crisis. I am asking that you get the Constitution of the United States out and review it every time you make a decision for our city and its citizens. I'm asking that you stay within the confines of what the Constitution allows. I'm also asking that you make decisions based on the science of viruses and then on the complete numbers, not just the data of the rising positive cases. I attached a chart at that time when I wrote the letter, July 16, 2020. I am glad that the Saline County Health Department have listened to repeated requests from the citizens to provide a more complete picture of the COVID situation in Salina, Kansas. So they started doing a chart that gave us more information, and I do appreciate that. Please do the math on the chart. You'll find that the death rate versus positives is very low. If you take the death rate versus all tested, it plummets even more dramatically. Please avoid making decisions based on the political climate and make sound decisions based on science and math. The mask ordinance is a symptom of a larger problem. The problem is abuse of power by our leaders. You don't have the authority to make such mandates. It is possible masks may cause more harm, number two, sorry, I'm nervous. Okay, one, you don't have the authority to make such mandates. Two, it's possible masks may cause more harm rather than prevent illness. Despite what the major narrative of the experts do not agree that, despite what the major narrative, all the experts do not agree that masks are effective. There is no crime in not wearing a mask, so penalizing us for not wearing one is a criminal act by our leaders. You have to be aware of all the economic ramifications that our city and state is facing already as a result of the draconian and unlawful actions by our leaders. The effects will be felt for years. You need to open up Salina and quit canceling events and not pick and choose what events are allowed. Another huge concern is what school closure is doing to families and especially children. There are many children in Salina in high-risk environments. These children are at risk for abuse, neglect, and for their basic survival needs not being met. Many times, school is the only place these kids get a respite from these damaging environments. And then I wrote in response to Mr. Ryan, and I said, "Thank you for your response. I do appreciate that, that you responded to me. I can clearly see you consider many aspects of this issue. Appreciate that you explained your reasoning. I also appreciate that you're willing to end the mandate as soon as possible. I urge you to continue to consider it and end it as soon as possible. You are the only commissioner that responded in such a way." Melissa acknowledged the receipt of my email, but she did not respond. As of today, I've heard from not any other commissioners, and I asked specifically that you would respond to me, and I would have appreciated that. I still expect to hear from them. If I don't, I'll be coming to the meeting and read my letters publicly. As the commission continues to make decisions for Salina, I again urge you to keep the Constitution in mind, citizens' rights, and not to overreach because of the political climate. Government should only be concerned with the basics. Citizens need to take personal responsibility for themselves. If we trade liberty for safety, we will have neither liberty nor safety. That was loosely quoted from Benjamin Franklin. I think it is something to consider. I think strong recommendations and guidelines based on science and county hospital data are perfectly fine, but the only real thing that mandates do is pit citizens against each other and further divide us. Do we want Facebook groups reporting what businesses and individuals are not complying? Do we want citizens calling in those businesses and people to the police? You know our law enforcement has enough on their plates without dealing with mass violations. In your own words, the ordinance makes criminals of our citizens. Is that what we want? People's tensions are high, as many are just trying to survive as our economy is crashing, and many are scared and stressed over the virus and don't know who or what to believe. And that's in light of the new graph that our Kansas Department of Health put out recently that also confuses people. The commission should not be adding to the tension. And then I go on about property taxes, but that is on your agenda, so I don't think I'm supposed to speak to that, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward during Citizens Forum?
Hi, I'm Carol Reed, and 417 Venus in Salina. I just had a question. On the I of Salina, though, we're talking about the city workers, and is it true that a lot of them are on furlough and that a lot of them only get 24 hours?
Some of them, those that are on work share can be working 24 or 32 hours typically. Then they also get unemployment, and they get the federal pandemic unemployment compensation. So we, the decrease in wages represents a cost savings for the city, and then they're able to draw unemployment and receive stimulus dollars.
So I guess I'm trying to figure out why, why are they on furlough? I'm talking about mainly the ones that are supposed to take care of the parks and the, why are they furloughed?
I don't know how much the governing body wants to get into it, but that, that was one of many budget decisions that were made in March and April as we went into the pandemic in anticipation of needing to identify cost savings and anticipation of the impacts of the pandemic.
I guess I'm a little concerned because of the, people that are, people are needing jobs, and we pay taxes enough for these people to be maintained, and if workers are needed, why not hire them to do some of the things that are needed around the town? We need some good employees out there. The city's looking pretty rough.
I guess, not, not to go into it, but if you stick around for 7.5, which is our June 30th financial update, I think you're going to get a lot more information that's going to tell you why we did what we did, why, where we're at, and what our goals are here going forward, so.
I guess because I drove by Kenwood Cove last week, and I was just shocked at how rough it looked. I appreciate them doing the work, and the volunteers are great, but it seems like the city residents love the town more than the city commissioners. I'm a little concerned that, I've seen older people out there that are way too old to be out there pulling weeds and trying to straighten up the city when it's the, it's a ruling that you guys can make a change before we have some older people end up in the hospital, you know, with other issues. So I just feel like it's the city's responsibility. We've got bugs and snakes and trash all over, and it's just looking pretty rough, so I hope you'll address that.
Yeah, we've, we've had those discussions when we made our cuts, and we'll be glad to go over some of that when we get to 7.5.
Well, I'm Sherri Harp, 821 Hancock. And just to follow up on that, when you said they're on a 24 to 32 hour, is that what you said? And they get unemployment besides that?
Correct.
And do they get the $600 beside that in the past?
Correct.
Well, that's unreal, though. They'll never go back to full-time work. I mean, if I was, if I was doing that, not, isn't that, doesn't that sound kind of silly to do instead of just putting them on full-time and yet drawing from the federal government to do that?
Again, there, there's a lot more went into it, and maybe we can get into that a little bit if you want to, because we, again.
Well, I guess because we're not aware of it, you know, the city, I mean, people are not aware that they're drawing a wage, the 32, 24, whatever it is, and then unemployment plus the $600, which now is going to be $400. I mean, I mean, that's taking money from the federal government that doesn't need to be taken when we could use our own. And we, I've lived here, oh my gosh, many years, but my, my, my point is, is this has just been, what, six, eight months that we've been in this little COVID thing, and we weren't prepared for any kind of, any catastrophe like this at all, to where we had to lay off so many of our city workers, but, yeah, okay.
Yeah, Reader's Digest version is, we were trying to be fiscally responsible, and one way to do that is payroll is, is our largest expense, and not knowing what income was going to be due to COVID-19, we had to make some hard decisions. And part of what we said when we did that is, some of it was going to be painful, and we knew that, and that's what we see with the parks, but we're going to discuss under 7.5 how to get back to more of a normal life, so.
Well, let's hope so, because I had a citation one time. I had my knee replaced, and I had my grass about, oh, eight or 10, 12 inches taller, and I got citations for that along with 14 other people and had to get it done. And now you look at the city now that's been so beautiful, that's not beautiful as, as it should be anymore. And I'm like my sister that these older people that are out there trying to keep their area from being, looking really shabby, don't need to be out there, so.
Anybody else? Okay, before we move from Citizens Forum, I would just like to make a couple comments. We, as a commission, just got back from a, I guess you'd call it a, oh, I'm sorry, somebody else, I'm sorry. I didn't see you coming up.
Okay, so I guess I'm at the lead room, Mr. Pierce, to begin speaking. Okay, so hello, my name is, oh, my name is Aileen Skavat, and I reside here in Salina, Kansas. I'm here speaking today in part with the Sunflower Coalition to bring attention to the previously promised second public forum by the Salina City Commission. We believe it would be productive to have a secondary public forum following the September 21st study session to serve in, as an avenue for citizens to respond to the conclusion given by the commission regarding police reform. We acknowledge putting together a second forum requires quite a bit of work. However, nothing is more viable than citizen feedback regarding how they themselves will be policed and how they interact with those who are assigned to serve and protect them. A pre-scheduled secondary forum allows for all communities within our city to attend and to have their voices heard, because these communities would have ample time to make arrangements to attend. With that being said, the forum being scheduled outside of typical working hours would allow for citizens of all backgrounds to attend, meaning like, a nine-to-five probably would not be that good, because a lot of like, working individuals cannot meet those kinds of times that are demanded of them. So like, scheduling it during a time that's outside like those typical hours, like such as like in the evening, would allow for individuals of all backgrounds from like working to non-working and like backgrounds of a color and all of those to like attend and actually voice what's being, just like the concerns that they may have, because these, as example, these meetings occur at four o'clock, and a lot of individuals, if not all, are like working during these types of hours. So having like, being able to schedule a secondary public forum like around kind of like this time for like following, September 21st would allow for these individuals to like take the time out, figure out a way on how they can actually attend that kind of meeting, and also allows for like individuals to start promoting a secondary forum, like a problem, not really like a problem, but something that I like observed with the last public forum that we had, was like, it really wasn't like promoted, a lot of individuals didn't know about it, and it was kind of just like a word-to-word thing. So if we have like a larger like time for individuals to like talk about it, then more people can come out and speak, like following September 21st on what you guys proposed on that study session itself. And therefore, as a representative of the Sunflower Coalition, I strongly urge the Salina City Commission to schedule a secondary public forum following the September 21st study session in freedom, struggle, and justice. Thank you.
Hi, Santiago Vazquez, I live in Salina, Kansas. Breaking from our usual, usual topic of interest, I did come out here to talk about defense of the Human Relations Commission. I wanted to know first, though, because I saw that we were talking about the financial update on 7.5, whether the issues concerning the Human Relations Commission would fall under that section of it, and whether I should wait to speak there.
I'm not sure where you're going, so.
Yeah, I guess I'd suggest you go ahead and make the comments now.
I was going to say, we were recently, someone recently came to talk to us that there was apparently an uncertain future in how the Human Relations Commission was going to be functioning in the city government, whether or not it would continue existing or continue having like a viable amount of staff. And in that sense, we were pretty concerned at hearing that, and we wanted to get some more information on what the future for the Human Relations Commission was, simply because they represent an important part of making sure that there is equitability within the community. And if it is the case that the future of the Human Relations Commission is uncertain, then we have to come out here and show our support, not only because the Human Relations Commission is one of only two fair housing assistance programs in the entire state of Kansas, but that means that, that these are one of the only avenues where people can get personalized assistance when they are presented with, with legal battles that they couldn't handle on their own, concerning housing, concerning treatment in the workplace. That's their one avenue to go for, considering also that they specialize specifically in helping minority voices and are one of the few places where minority voices are employed. As far as I understand, I believe that, that a good number of the people who are employed in the Human Relations Commission are, are people of color, meaning that there's a level of comfortability there where people have access to people who look like them as well. That is also hugely important. Additionally to that, I know that they've been doing work trying to reach out into the community. I mean, I know obviously that's been hampered with COVID and how the pandemic has worked, but I know that the first time I personally was introduced to the Human Relations Commission ever, or practically any aspect of city government, was when they held a public parlay at Astra talking about fair housing, which is also where I got my first introduction to what's going on with, with housing in Salina and just in general. So they're, they're doing their, their fair share of work of actually going out there and reaching into the community and also doing their actual jobs of protecting people legally. So in that sense, TSC comes out here in full support of making sure that the HRC is fully funded, that has access to all the resources it needs, especially now, because during the time of COVID, not only do we see people getting laid off from their jobs, we also see people not being able to meet rent. I know that's been a huge problem nationally. I haven't done specific research on how that's affected Salina, but it is very real that if you are not making money because you're laid off from your job or can't go to your job, then you can't be paying rent. And we are, and at least in the entire country, expecting to see a huge wave of evictions. And that falls directly under the Department of the Human Relations Commission. And considering they're one of the few levels that we have in the entire state of making sure that, that inequitable treatment doesn't happen on that level, it seems that that is one of the most important branches of government locally that we have and should be seeing a huge amount of attention and support from the community and from the government as well. So, yeah, we came out here just to say that we are in full support of that and would like more information addressing that issue, whether or not that is going to be an issue with the HRC and what can be done about it.
Good evening, Miranda Bachman, Salina, Kansas. I'm here to remind the commission that Black Lives Matter, and that I am, am still working on my No Justice, No Peace Plaza. After all, it is a long project, but I want you to consider Oakdale Park still as the location and to come down as a, or to come into a deciding point there anyway, as far as my team goes. We are meeting with the building authority to present our idea to them also, so we're thinking a two-phase type of situation there. Also, just to back up on the HRC commissions, I, just personally, as a single mother, again, I have actually used them in the past, and I would hate to see any, any changes being made there. I think that they're a great board, and I'm, they need all the funding that they can get. I know that just working two jobs and not being able to, you know, sometimes make ends meet, and although there are, you know, holdings on evictions, people are putting their houses up for sale all over. And I know a lot of people that have been forced to find a different rentals because their houses are being put on the market. Although they can't be evicted, there's other ways to do it, so I just want you to keep that in mind as well. Thanks, have a great evening.
Okay, anyone else during Citizens Forum? Okay, so I started to say, the commission and some staff just returned from Schwann's, just had a, an announcement that they will be building a, what they called a world-class facility out at the Tony's Pizza Facility. It was kind of interesting, I just want to share some numbers of what they're projecting, and this will be a construction project that will go and through 2022. They plan on, this facility will have 900,000 man-hours to build. It will be 400,000 square feet, and some commissioners helped me if I heard this right, the length of this facility will be that of approximately 14 football fields?
I think that it was, it's probably three football fields and 1,200 feet or 1,400 feet long.
Is that what it was?
14 football fields is a long, long way.
That's what I thought, so.
I think he got confused and misspoke.
Okay, thank you, because I was trying to figure. But one of the things they said is, when they are completed, they will produce over 130 million pizzas a year. The, they expect onsite during construction for there to be anywhere from 250 to 400 people on the job site at one time. When it's completed, not only will we retain the current jobs that we have, that they will add 225 more jobs. One of the things that I think is important for the citizens of Salina to realize is that this was a competitive bid situation, and there are other states that were bidding on this, hoping to bring these jobs that we currently have in Salina to their state. So just wanted to share that news with the community. That's excellent information and, and something that we as a community should be very excited about. So thank you to Schwann's for their investment in our community. Also, you'll probably see some press releases, but the state was very instrumental in this. Governor Kelly was here. They put together a very nice incentive package to help keep Schwann's in our community also. So with that, I believe, unless, did any other commissioners wish to comment on that?
Didn't find you out there.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, we will move to 5.1.
Item 5.1, Public Hearing on the Proposed 2021 Budget for the City of Salina. Item 5.1A, First Reading Ordinance Number 20-11035, Adopting and Appropriating the 2021 Annual Budget.
I'm going to look at staff. Do I need to call the public hearing to order?
Yes.
Okay, with that, I will call the public hearing to order on the proposed 2021 budget for the city of Salina.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Mayor, Mr. Mayor. Debbie Papp, Director of Finance. Per Kansas State statute, we are required to hold a formal public hearing on the proposed budget. We're also required to publish that notice in the paper at least 10 days prior to the hearing date. We did publish that notice in the Salina Journal on July 30th, 2020. The final 20, proposed 2021 budget includes total expenditures for all funds of $111,457,319. This is comparable to the 2020 budget, which was $108,369,096. Of that difference of $3,088,223, approximately $2 million of that is the carryforward balance reserve difference between what we, what we budgeted in 2020 and 2021. And about $1 point million of that difference is- And about $1 point million of that difference is the cash purchase of carts in the sanitation fund. Overall, this leaves the budget expenditures in 2021 just under what we budgeted in 2020. The final pro, proposed 2021 budget establishes a mill levy of 30.697 mils, which is .97 mils greater than the 2020 final mill levy of 29.712. This mill levy will allocate $10,737,73, or $173 to the general fund and $3,62,827,000 to the bond and interest fund, for a total of 3, $13,800,000. Valuations this year did not increase very much, .34%. Of that growth, there was reduction in personal property, a slight increase in real estate, and an increase in new development. Restoration of fund balances has been a, a high level of priority for us. At the close of 2019, the actual general fund balance was about $7 million. Our target balance is $8.5 million. With the onset of COVID-19 and early 2020, budget projections for 2020 had to be significantly adjusted. The most recent projection, um, showed our ending fund balance of the general fund anywhere between 7.8 and 8.2 million dollars. The 2021 budget assumes growth in the general fund of approximately 500,000, although a good portion of that, 337,000, is, is due to a one-time funding decrease requested by OCCK because they're getting full funding from the Department of Transportation through a COVID stimulus, uh, program. Authorized staffing in the 2021 budget is 491 positions. This is up from 489,000 in 2020 due to two part-time positions in building, building facilities. Salary projections assume stable turnover and vacancy levels. Allowances have been made in the projections to accommodate an overall pay plan adjustment or cost of living of 2%, 2% and a possible merit increase of up to 2%. The comprehensive fee schedule has been reviewed and will be adjusted to, to, due to inflation and market pricing, in an average of 2% to 3%. In specific in that comprehensive fee, sanitation fees will increase from $16.50 to $17. Solid waste fees are proposed to stay the same, however, the, uh, weight limits have been changed from 540 pounds to 500 pounds, and there's been an increase of, from $36 to $40 per ton for everything over 500 pounds. As you might recall, adjustments to wastewater and water and golf course will be deferred until later in the year. The annual budget provides the plan and authorization of resources for the operation of city services. There are two actions before you this afternoon. One is to conduct the public hearing and take comments from citizens on the proposed budget, and the second is to pass on first ordinance, the, um, resol, the ordinance of adopting the, the 2021 budget. So, at this time, I guess we'll take comments or questions.
Do we need to do that first, open up for public comment?
Yeah, if you have questions for staff, you're welcome to take them, you can open it for public comment. If I may add, I might just remind you that going into this budget, we had a conversation about the uncertainty of the remainder of this year and the uncertainty of next year. And so, this essentially carries forward 2019, 2020, but recognizing we're gonna have to continue to monitor performance this year and reassess before this fiscal year starts in January 1. They, there may need, may be need for adjustments in resp, in response to that. Uh, this sets a budget, creates sufficient authority to proceed as proposed, but we'll continue to have to revisit that.
Okay, questions for staff?
You know, the, the only comment I'd have at this time before the public speaks is I wish that we had the financial update before we had this, because I think, uh, depending on, on the results there, it's gonna, it's gonna either solidify or change my opinion on how to proceed on the budget. Uh, and there are obviously some things that are, uh, in the last couple of months, we've seen primarily as a result of federal stimulus to the community, uh, that have changed our, that changes our outlook pretty significantly.
Uh, we understand that frankly, that was the intention till our schedule, we, we had scheduled conflicts to try to get all this balanced.
I, I do notice that one of the options we have is to postpone the ordinance till next week. Would that be an issue so we could do the, the budget update? It still appears that we could still do the first and second reading and meet the statutory, um, deadline?
It's possible.
Possible.
Uh, if, if it's changed, it puts a lot of pressure on staff to get that turned around in six or eight hours, whatever that timeframe is, from the 24th to the 25th. But it is possible. We haven't told the 25th to submit to the county.
The statutory deadline is the 25th, but I, I also know that, uh, there's no, um, penalty for not getting it certified on the 25th, and, in fact, uh, we have on occasion called down to the county clerk's office and just given them a heads-up that we're gonna be a week late, so that they know how to plan their workload, and they have always been gracious in accepting that. So, I, I think, you know, maybe we can buy some time, I'm just suggesting that's, that's an approach, um, to give us a chance to fully digest some of the financial information that's at the back of the meeting instead of at the front. Um, I, I concur with, uh, the mayor in that I, I would like to see, um, not the hearing part, we've got people here who wanna speak to us, but in fact, any, uh, act, consideration of the ordinance be delayed until, uh, after we receive the financial update and can have some, uh, a little more background.
I, I think you can also amend the agenda. You can conduct the hearing and you can move this item to the end of the agenda if you prefer.
I like that idea.
Yeah. There's, there's a matter of the folks who are in between who might be inconvenienced tonight, I don't know.
Well, they can, we can go ahead and have the public hearing, is what he's saying. There's two separate orders. We do the public hearing, and then would we need a motion to move the, the reading and the ordinance to, to the end of the meeting?
If you wish to postpone it to whatever point, you would need a motion to that effect.
I'll look to the fellow commissioners for input. Can that be done during, while the hearing is open?
Uh, I would suggest you conduct the hearing, close the hearing, and then move to the next action item.
Okay. Okay, with that, we will open it up to the public for comments, uh, on the proposed 2021 budget.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Denise Ward, and I reside at 711 East Magnolia here in Salina. I am here today to express my opposition to the mill levy increase in the proposed 2021 budget. This will be the third year in a row that our property ta, property taxes will be raised on top of the valuation increases imposed last year. The year 2020 has been a challenge for all of us, from closing our businesses, losing our jobs and income, struggling to pay our rent, mortgages, and utilities, to struggling to feed our families and even finding toilet paper. We have all had to tighten our belts, prioritize our needs, remove our wants, and slimline our businesses to make ends meet. The governing body of Salina should be no different. It is my understanding that the mill levy increase is to allow city employees to receive COLA and merit raises, but in looking at the line items of the budget, there appears to be other ways to afford this without relying on the citizens of Salina. First off, what good does it do to give them small raises in income and then take it back in the form of property taxes and raise rents, because rents will have to be raised to offset the tax increase, and not just for individuals, but for many small businesses too. Why does the city budget include thousands of dollars in overtime? When you factor in fire and police, it becomes well over a million. Excuse me. As a business owner, if I am paying a large amount in overtime, then my employees are not being managed correctly. Perhaps the department managers need to look at ways to streamline or shift responsibilities to alleviate their expenses. The Computer Technology Department is showing an increase of over $75,000. Is any of this related to the $123,000 they have requested from the CRF funding through the county, from which, by watching the meetings, I don't know if you have, are most likely going to be awarded? Seditation and recycle center have more than doubled their amount for public education materials, which when combined total more than $36,000. Surely, we can find a cheaper printer. Like the city, businesses and individuals alike have been hard with added expenses for cleaning supplies and PPE to keep our families, employees, and customers safe. The city will most likely be receiving the requested amount of just over $24,000 from the county CRF funding to cover their costs. We as individuals do not have that luxury. The city will also be receiving just over $900,000 to reimburse them for salaries and sick leave already incurred related to COVID-19, which will help alleviate their expenses for 2020 and should help with their target fund balance. The governing body has decided that instead of removing their wants, public art, flowers that aren't maintained, bike hike trails, just to name a few, they will continue to spend taxpayers' dollars to fund them. There is just over $47,000 earmarked for downtown building facades. Facades may make the buildings look pretty and raise the property value, which due to the downtown Tiff district will not help our general fund, but it does help, but it does not help the average citizen put food on their table. And then, of course, there's the massive river renewal project. I understand the river project is funded by sales tax that was voted on in 2016, almost five years ago, before we ever heard of COVID-19, but I have to ask you now, if that came up for a vote today, do you think it would be approved? Also, documentation that I've looked at on the project shows there's a possibility that the project may cost an additional $10 million that was, does not look like it was originally budgeted. Have thoughts been given on how that will be paid, or will our taxes be raised again? When comparing the net expenditures from 2019 to 2021, our expenditures are down by almost $47 million, and there was already a mill levy increase last year. And I know part of that was to cover the city portion of the emergency radio system, but I also feel there are ever, other projects that have been moved to being funded by our property taxes. The police training facility comes to mind, and many citizens are not aware of. I personally don't understand why we need an increase unless, as was stated at one of the earlier commission meetings, that if you don't do it this year, you would be limited on what you could do next year. Shame on you. I know some of the amounts I've mentioned may not sound like a lot, but when you start adding them up, the amounts become more significant, and I'm sure there are other areas where savings could be made that would more than cover your employee raises without raising the taxes of the already struggling citizens, citizenship of Salina. Should the governing body like to include their wants in the budget, I might suggest you do like the rest of us and dip into your savings. I also want the governing body to realize that there is a very large part of our population that have no faith in this commission, and over the course of the last weeks, I have been appalled at the amount of citizens who have said, "It will not do us any good to raise our voices because the commission's mind is already made up, and there's nothing we can do to change it." Here is your chance to show them they are wrong. Show them that you do care and you have their best interests at heart. I challenge you, I challenge you to ask yourself, when was the last time you sat down and had honest discussion with the waitress down the street how they have been affected by the pandemic? There are a lot of them in the city. For my final remarks, I just wanna say, 2020 has sucked for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise.
Okay.
Commission, it'd be real nice if you guys would run the city like you would run your own business, because where's all the money coming from? The federal government does it all the time. They go pull it from either the citizens of the government, or the citizens of the United States or the state, and it goes into their pocket 90% of the time.
I think you don't. Anyone else?
I just wanted to make a comment about, um, how I was surprised that my valuation went up, and I just had to make a payment to my loan company to, from my escrow account. And then, all of a sudden, I heard that we're also going to have an increase in property taxes. Does that valuation money go into the same pot as our property taxes? I'd like to believe that that's true. Therefore, we will be having a double increase in our property taxes. So, that's my concern, that we were just, our property taxes were just raised through valuation, and so that's a very big concern. And now to have it again raised through the budget is, is concerning.
Do you wanna address how the valuation and the, I, I think, there's a little, yeah, let's, we'll kinda try to explain to you how that works.
Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. The valuation is set by the, the county appraiser. It does flow into the city, however, but I will note that the valuation of existing real property increased in total by .18% um, to the city. So, while yours probably, obviously, went up significantly, there were others that did not go up or went down, so that number. The valuation is set by the county, the valuation then is applied, the, the mill levy is then applied to a portion of that, the assessed value of that appraised value, and that's the, the portion of that mill levy, which is, not all of that tax goes to the city. There's a good portion that goes to other funding sources. The city gets about 22% of the total mill levy, um, so only 30 mils of the 140 mils that is typically assessed comes back to the city, the rest goes to the county, the school district, the airport authority, the library, the extension council. Does that answer your question?
Okay.
It's part of the formula, but it's not directly.
Thank you for that clarification, but I just want the city commission to realize that people are paying that as well, even though that, not all the money, I guess, from your clarification is coming to the city, but people are burdened with that, so thank you for considering that.
Anyone else like to address the budget?
Well, I appreciate what Denise was saying, uh, but I, back to this, um, I had my house appraised, and, uh, shortly after that, I got the city's appraisal, and I had it appraised so that we could refinance. And, um, it was about 15,000 below, maybe 14,000 below, uh, what the city had appraised at, and when I brought in my appeal and visited with them, they said that I asked how they come to that conclusion, because no one ever walks through my house or sees anything on the internal, so how did they come up with $14,000 more than what it previously was appraised at? And the comment was that they looked at the value of the houses that were selling, uh, one of them was, you know, probably two miles away from me, and that that's how they come to that conclusion on the price that the houses were selling for. Um, anyway, I was very disheartened with that because, uh, you know, that's a big chunk when you figure 13,000 to 14,000 dollars higher, because that's gonna shore up, up your house payment. So, um, anyway, I don't know if everybody else had that experience, but it's, uh, quite a big jump, though.
Two, two comments. Again, it's the county appraisal, appraiser, not the city appraiser, in that there is a, an appeal process, and I don't know if you've ever done that, but if you feel like your value is out of line, you can appeal to the county appraiser's office for your value.
I did appeal.
Okay, okay.
And they had to lower it because I had the official appraisal.
Okay, so, yep. So, you took the correct steps, good.
My name's Thomas Carter, I live at 309 North 11th Street here in Salina, Kansas. I've had a real estate business here, I've now dissolved. Um, got into this several years ago. This particular property that I'm talking about, where I live now, the city appraised it for $99,000. I had to go through four appeals to get it down to $35,000. I don't understand that. Why did I have to go through so much to show people what the real value of a property is? I don't understand that. You're making me pay a lot more tax money on something that's not worth what it is. My house sits here today, we're talking close to $60,000 difference. Where you come from? You're not living the world I live in. How does that happen?
For, again, that's not our value. Again, that's the county appraiser, not to throw somebody under the bus, but that's who sets values. They have, again, I think we've had that comment, they have a, a program that does that. If you have an issue, uh, they're just down the hall. If you have an issue, they're just down the hall, and I would suggest that you take that up with the county appraiser, which it sounds like you've done.
Yes, I have.
But really, that's kind of out of our, it's out of our hands.
How can it be out of your hands when I'm in the city? How does the county control that? I also own property over at 240 South Front Street here in Salina, Kansas, across from Oakdale Park. I own part of the park. The city attorney had told me that if I didn't sell them that property, there was other ways they could take it. Is that the way you work, you strong-armed people? Is that the way you function?
I apologize, I'm not familiar with that case, so I really can't.
I'll tell you what, I'm on my way out of this state, and you can have it. You people are ridiculous. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Okay, with that, we will.
Sorry about that. Good afternoon. My name is Eric Brown. I am the president and CEO of the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce. I sent you all an email earlier today regarding this topic. I guess this is where we're coming from. I did a survey of our members. We received 7.1%, or 7.1% response back, and 75% of those businesses indicated that they would not be in favor of increasing levy at this time. As you all know, property tax is a direct expense to business, and especially in a time of economic slump brought in by COVID-19, I would encourage you not to, at this point, increase that tax levy. This takes nothing away from the city employees and what they do on a daily basis to make this city go. The other point around that is you're also asking for a property tax increase when, as you've said with your own words, there's been a lot of services that just don't happen because of COVID-19. So we would request that, at this point, you do not increase the property tax to get this budget where you would like it at this point, but instead, look for other line items to potentially see if you can get where you all need to be at that point. So I just wanted to share that with you at this point.
Would you consider that a pretty poor response rate?
Yeah, 7.9%. I mean, our open rate on emails is usually in the 15% to 20% rate. So there's, you know, 7.1% is lower than that, for sure.
And again, being a chamber member, I received the notice, and it was, there was no options or there was no, as to what to do if the mill levy was not adjusted? Is that correct? It was just one question?
The survey itself was one question. As part of that message, there was an outline of the study session from both 720 and 727, and also the link to the PDF of the budget presentation as well that came on that survey.
Okay.
So I feel like there was background there provided.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing on the proposed 2021 budget for the city of Salina. And that will move us to 5.1A.
Item 5.1A, first reading ordinance number 20-11035, adopting and appropriating the 2021 annual budget.
Debbie Pack, Director of Revenue. And as Mr. Skregg said, your options for this is to pass ordinance 20-11035 on first reading. This will come back to commission on August 17th for second reading, along with some other legislative actions relating to the budget adoption. You have the option to make amendments to the 2021 budget as presented, or you have the option to postpone consideration of this ordinance, which would then need to be approved on first reading on August 17th and second reading on August 24th to meet the statutorily imposed deadline for certification to the county clerk. Or, as Mr. Skregg said, you could postpone this, amend the agenda and postpone it till later in this agenda.
Any comments by the commission? How would you like to proceed?
Well, I would not, I have no objection to postponing it later in the meeting. I think we've had, you know, a lot of the legwork on this has been done in the preceding two months.
I can't object to that as well. The other information we have in the financial report might be informative to some of the people here that don't understand that we've put in 20 hours in public meetings and maybe, probably the lowest wattage bulb up here, I put in at least 20 hours studying that information before the meetings, before we've come to the decision that we have. So, yeah, it'd be useful if we just make it a little later in the meeting.
Could I get a motion to move that? Mayor, I move that we, proper term would be postpone, or amend, just amend the agenda?
Just to amend the agenda, the postpone generally assumes a subsequent meeting.
Okay, we amend today's agenda to hear item 5.1A after item 7.6B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move item 5.1A, being the first reading of ordinance number 2011035, to follow item 7.6B. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes 4-0.
I would like to clarify that the purpose behind this is to get the consideration of the budget ordinance after we're presented with a current financial update, so we can maybe make a decision based on more complete and current information than we've had so far going into this, because things have changed, I think, just from what I can see, changed fairly rapidly over the last couple of months with regard to our financial positioning. So I think that it's important that we understand what that is before we consider the ordinance.
Okay. Okay, with that, we will move to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the special meeting minutes of August 3, 2020. Item 6.2, approve the regular meeting minutes of August 3, 2020.
Okay. Are there any comments from the public? If not, is there any items that the commission would like removed? If not, I will accept a motion for approval.
Mayor, I move we approve item 6.1 and 6.2 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda items 6.1 and 6.2. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes 4-0. That will lead us to administration.
Item 7.1, first reading ordinance number 20-11036, levying special assessments against certain lots and pieces of property to pay the cost of abatement of nuisances.
Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. Good afternoon again. Throughout the year, ordinances are sent to property owners as violations of city code pertaining to property maintenance are recognized either by other citizens or by inspection staff. There's approximately six steps that go into this before we get to this step. First of all, the code enforcement officer investigates and confirms that there is a violation. Secondly, he confirms and sends a notice of the violation to the property owner. Then the code enforcement officer gives them a deadline to respond to that violation and goes out after that deadline and does a follow-up to the inspection to make sure that the violation has been properly handled. If the violation still exists, when the code enforcement officer proceeds, he will order an abatement, typically with a pre-approved abatement contractor that the city has hired for that particular year. Once the contractor completes the abatement, an invoice is sent to the property owner with certified mail, and the owner has 30 days to pay those costs. If those costs are not paid from that invoice, we get to this point in which we are levying special assessments against that property, which are collected with property taxes. These particular items in this ordinance are all items that have been finalized since the 2019 certification, which would have been at this time last year. The total billed was $85,067.07, of which $14,866 has been paid. The remaining amount to be assessed is $70,857.07. We've identified several options for you. You can approve the ordinance 2011036, levying special assessments against certain lots and pieces of property to pay cost of abatement of nuisances. You can postpone consideration of the ordinance and give staff direction for what you'd like to see. You can approve the ordinance on first reading and provide us direction regarding additional information or amendments to the second reading. Or you can vote to deny the ordinance and deny levying special assessments against certain lots and pieces of property, pay the cost of the abatements. If the city commission declines to approve the ordinance, the cost assessed in the amount of $70,857.07 would not be levied against the property owners, and the cost would then default to the city's responsibility. I do have other members from Development Service here if you have any specific questions about how it's done or what it is or anything like that. I will note there is one large assessment on the list for a little over $39,000. That particular item was for a demolition. That demolition was approved by city commission on October 28, 2019, and it was awarded at that time. So that's where that large one was.
Okay, any questions for staff?
So in fact, absent a demolition, we're actually talking about what, $30,000 in total assessments for the typical mowing issues?
Trash pickup debris.
How does that compare to previous years?
It's down. It's decreased. I don't know the prior year's number, but it is noticeably less.
I see the experts getting ready.
I'm up here for like the next three items, so it's probably just time to have a seat anyways. What we have been trying through kind of these difficult times is working with property owners, particularly at that eight-inch number for mowing. Mowing is what kind of gets most notorious, right? If you've gotten cited, been told about mowing, and we've had to do that, the first time is kind of, we let you know, but after that, abatement will kick in for automatic mowing if we have to go back out and deal with it. Over the last couple of months, we have been trying to focus on really the bigger issue, the bigger problem properties, and trying to work more with the eight-inch, you know, mowing issues, and trying to remind people more before we have to do that second mowing, just because of some of the issues that were addressed earlier related to COVID and being able to get assistance and help like that. So we are down this year primarily because we're focusing on some of the larger problem properties. And, you know, one of the questions I've been asked the last couple of days is, why do you have to do this at all? If the city's not mowing, why do we have to mow? And that's one perspective, but I also have the neighbors that call and say, "I'm mowing my yard, why don't they have to mow?" And so in trying to stick with the regulations and trying to kind of get everybody to where we need them to be and to follow that, without explicit direction from you guys to bypass those rules and regulations during COVID, we've been trying to administer those as best as possible this year.
And Ms. Pack, by saying it's, if we don't assess the properties, it's the city's responsibility, that really means at the bottom line, that gets paid for with property taxes or sales taxes or some other general revenue in the general fund.
Yeah, the work has been done and the expense has been incurred, so this is really a reimbursement of what we've already paid.
And that comes from the annual abatement contract that you approve, and then that contractor follows up on our abatement throughout the fiscal year.
Any other questions for staff? If not, are there any comments from the public? If not, I will bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move we approve ordinance number 211036, levying special assessments against certain lots and pieces of property to pay the cost of abatement of nuisances.
I'll second that. Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 2011036, levying special assessments against certain lots and pieces of property. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes 4-0. That will lead us to 7.2.
Item 7.2, first reading ordinance number 20-11037, levying special assessments against certain lots and pieces of property to pay the cost of the repair of sidewalks.
Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. This ordinance also is very similar to the one that we just spoke about. This one, however, has to do with the repair of sidewalks. Sidewalk repair and replacement is the responsibility of the budding property owner. When a sidewalk that is in need of repair or replacement is reported to Public Works, the city staff goes to the location, inspects it, and based on certain criteria, they determine if it's inadequate or unsafe sidewalk for travel, whether it requires condemnation or reconstruction. And they have a set of criteria that they look at depending on what type of sidewalk it is. If the sidewalk is deemed to be inadequate or unsafe, the notice of repair is sent to the property owner, just like in the previous ordinance. The property owner has 30 days to respond, either by fixing it or requesting an additional 30-day extension. The property owner has a maximum of 60 days from the date of the receipt of the original notice to make repairs to the sidewalk. The property owner has options. They can either make the repairs themselves, they can hire it out, or they can make arrangements for a contractor to repair the sidewalk. In the same situation, if the sidewalk is not repaired, the staff at Public Works will have the work done, will send them an invoice, and then they have 30 days to pay that. If they don't pay it, then it is assessed a special assessment, just like nuisance abatements on the previous one. This proposed ordinance would levy a total of $3,223.05 to the tax roll. Options for your consideration are to approve ordinance 20-11037, levying special assessments against certain lots and pieces of property to pay the cost for the repair of sidewalks. Approve the ordinance levying special assessments with modifications to the list as the city commission feels necessary, or to decline to approve the ordinance and deny levying special assessments against certain lots, at which point, these costs would then become the responsibility of the city.
Okay, questions for staff?
I presume that this, these locations come to our attention through a report from a member of the public. In other words, our employees don't go around looking for bad sidewalks?
That would be correct.
We do, one report, one complaint begets another, and it's not uncommon for staff to be, for lack of a better word, confronted about the thoroughness of our inspection. So there have been years where we have notebooks full of feedback, which prompts a considerable amount of inspection and review in the community.
So what you're saying is sometimes if we get a report, we send somebody out on site, they either see something else in an adjacent property, or the owner of that property says, "Well, what about, you know, a neighbor three houses down, his sidewalk's worse than mine?" And so you end up with kind of a cascading series of reports.
Okay. Do we end up doing this with city staff, or do we contract it out?
The abatement of sidewalks?
Yeah.
That is not handled through the abatement contract that Development Services uses, I believe.
Mr. Kowach is here to be our expert on this one.
Jim Kowach, Public Works Director. Now, this is handled through a contract, as like an on-call contract that we have every year. We put it out for bids, and they bid pretty much per square yard, and then each project or each property gets an estimate before the works approved.
So I guess just a quick question, would it be just as economical for an individual to allow us to do it as it would for them to contract it out themselves if they were not doing it themselves?
It is.
It is often- It's assumption that we were getting competitive prices and competitive bids, that could very well be the case. Now, there is some administrative, if, if they allow it to get to the point of being assessed, there's some administrative fees on top of that.
We generally try to get people to do it themselves, especially, I mean, pouring concrete's kind of a different deal, but if it's removing an old car, or picking up trash, I mean, some people can get to that, but-
Yeah, I was talking mostly about the sidewalks and stuff, I didn't know.
Yeah, Mr. Kowach, I can phrase the question differently, make sure I understood it, is, do we have people who in fact, once they are noticed that they have a bad sidewalk, they let our contractor do it, and, and then, do they pay us, or do they, these are the ones that have not been paid?
Right, right. Well, we get, probably this past year, I think it's typical to get 20 or 30 of these a year, and we had four that actually did not pay it, and it's going through the assessment process.
So most of them have been taken care of?
Okay, they do the work themselves, they hire a contractor and pay them, or we hire a contractor, and then they pay the bill for that. So there's, this is a small percentage of the actual number of sidewalk repairs.
Okay. Any other questions? Any public comment? If not, I will bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Mayor, move we approve on first reading ordinance number 20-11037, levying special assessments against certain lots and pieces of property to pay the cost of the repair of sidewalks.
I'll second that one.
We have a motion and a second to approve on first reading ordinance number 20-11037. All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. That passes 4-0. That will bring us to item 7.3.
Item 7.3, Resolution Number 20-7862, authorizing the mayor to execute an amended and restated sidewalk cafe license agreement with JKS K Corporation, authorizing an outdoor sidewalk dining area in Strand Plaza, abutting the Barolo Grill Restaurant at 112 South Santa Fe Avenue.
Okay. Mr. Skel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, as you may remember, it was not very long ago, July 8, 2020, the city commission agreed to the recommendations by the Design Review Board for the conditions, and passed Resolution 19-7719, authorizing the mayor to execute a sidewalk cafe license agreement with JKS K Corporation, allowing the placement of sidewalk dining area in Strand Plaza at the rear of the Barolo Grill Restaurant located at 112 South Santa Fe Avenue. That license agreement does allow for maintenance and set some maintenance components in there. You have a secondary license agreement that was done with that property as well to address a grease interceptor that is under another planter in that same area. The difference being though, and why these weren't combined into one, is that planter is slightly out of the designated dining area, where this planter that we're discussing with you today is fully in that area. As you may remember, there are several planters within the boundary of the outdoor dining area. While doing construction, JKS K Corporation contacted the city and noticed that a tree in the northern corner, closest to the door and the side of the building, had, seems to be outgrowing its planter, and was starting to crack that planter. It also drops quite a bit of fruit and other debris in that area. The forester for the city did confirm that in an email I got copied on later today, that he agrees that the, the particular tree has outgrown the space. And that tree itself is a sweet gum tree, and it does have, and is not ideal for high traffic areas. The fruit that is dropped is, you know, roughly about the size of a quarter, and it is also hard, it's a trip hazard, you can step on it, it doesn't exactly smush, it kind of rolls.
Is it the, is it the, the fruit that's kind of spiky?
Yes, spiny.
It's not good to step on barefooted, I confess to that, yes.
No, and, you know, you step on it in a pair of shoes, I mean, it's a great way to, to roll a foot. So, not exactly ideal for high traffic area, and the forester did confirm that it has outgrown that particular planter. JKS K Corporation came to the city and asked if they could pay to remove the tree and replace the tree with a sculpture base that would showcase a sculpture either purchased or long-term borrowed or leased from the Slina Sculpture Tour. Around that sculpture would be landscaping appropriate to the area, along with, you know, the identification and name of the sculpture. This would work into the rest of the landscaping that is part of the downtown, or sidewalk dining area within that plaza. That landscaping plan has been attached, and I can tell you the city forester has also approved the landscaping plan. I was notified about that this afternoon. And that is typical duty of the forester. I think most notable is that, this is, this is kind of new territory, right? We haven't had a lot of these sidewalk dining licenses yet. Many of them have just been approved in the last 12 to 24 months, and there are a lot of moving pieces here. Both the applicant and staff thought it necessary to come back to the city commission to specifically ask for this amendment and restatement of the sidewalk dining license. It's a bit out of typical maintenance, removing an entire tree, maintaining and fixing the planter, and then replacing that with something that is different. Looking at both the city's interest and the applicant's interest, and of course, the interest of the public using the plaza, there are several features that were amended in the license agreement, specifically in Section 1C, to address the covenants, or kind of the rules of how the applicant uses the plaza. And those are timelines related to, you know, taking out the tree and how quickly those are replaced, and then if the tree is ever fully removed, making sure something is put back in its place, or if the sculpture's removed, making some, sure something is put back in its place. And that allows flexibility for the applicant, but also surety for the city. And so, the timeline that's set forth in the license agreement is, removal of the tree would be within 90 days following the X, the effective date of this license agreement. Repair of the existing cracks and damages to the concrete planter would occur within 90 days after removal of the tree. Landscaping and the landscaping planter within 90 days following the effective date of the license agreement, or concurrently with the installation of the sculpture, whichever occurs first. The sculpture base be installed within 365 days after the removal of the tree, and the sculpture installed within 365 days after the removal of the tree. That 365 duration was chosen, allowing based on the seasons and what kind of construction could occur, and depending on what sculpture tour had available, allowing the applicant to try and find the right sculpture for them, and giving some wiggle room. But it does have removal of the tree, repair of the planter, and basic landscaping within 90 days, making sure that that's addressed. So with that, the commission could approve Resolution 20-7862, authorizing the mayor to execute the revised sidewalk license agreement with JKS K Corporation, authorizing the removal of a tree and the replacement with a sculpture base within a planter located in the outdoor sidewalk dining area in Strand Plaza, abutting Barolo Restaurant at 112 South Santa Fe Avenue. Or the commission may make amendments, or postpone consideration of the resolution to a specific date, and provide direction for staff regarding additional information or amendments, or decline to approve Resolution 20-7862, that would not change the current sidewalk dining license agreement. That would stay in its place, but it would not allow for the removal of the tree and the replacement with a sculpture base within that area. Staff is here to answer any questions, and I believe there is a representative from JKS K Corporation available if you have questions.
Any questions for staff? I have one question. Looking at the drawing, what if the required base was larger than 16 inches? I would rather address that now than-
I think to kind of hone in on what you're approving, your license agreement is essentially allowing them to take out the tree and replace it with a sculpture base and landscaping. The landscaping plan itself is typically approved by the forester, and basically what he is looking for is, will these plants survive Kansas weather? Are they appropriate? Are they the right size? Things like that. If that sculpture base were bigger than 16 inches, and they came back to us with a revised landscaping plan that said, "Hey, we need to use a smaller plant because we need a bigger base," we would then go to the forester and say, "Is this new plant still, you know, meeting the integrity of the whole design? Will it fit there? Will it survive in Kansas?" That kind of thing. That's typically not brought back in front of the body. So it is allowable, I mean, they've got the planter to work within, these shrubs could be smaller.
I just didn't want, have to come back and ask for approval if that base needed to be 18 or 24 inches, depending on what sculpture was placed in there, so, okay.
It would simply be a matter of selecting a sculpture that fit that base, I would suggest. I mean, I, you know, that's got to be a limitation, then. Are they also going to replace the planter in its current footprint? I noticed the drawing has a hexagonal, so is that planter going to go back where it is?
I believe the representative could speak to that, but what they have informed staff is that they plan to repair the planter as-is, so keep it the same size, not remove the planter, but those cracks that are there.
They would repair with-
Yes.
With some filler, okay.
And I believe they've also met with a tree expert to verify that the tree can be taken out without destroying the planter. So that has been verified. But one of the reasons we set the timeline in such a way is getting the tree out of there that you still have time to repair the planter, so if there was some damage caused from removal, it could still be dealt with, and didn't have to be done first.
Okay, any other questions?
I personally would like the tree. I like a tree there, but having looked at that tree, I can understand why they don't want that particular tree in that particular location, because it is quite, there's stuff on the ground underneath, and, you know, obviously it is very large, and is touching the building in a couple of places that I noticed, so.
Well, I think one of the things you can see in Exhibit A1, which is the landscaping plan, is there will be some other, more columnar trees, and I think it's helpful to see really the whole landscaping plan, rather than just this planter-
Right.
-that was provided, to kind of give you a sense of, you know, being a visiting citizen in that area, what would that foliage look like, whether you were in the area or looking outside from it. And one of the clauses in the license agreement does state, Commissioner Franz, that if, for some reason, you know, they don't want that sculpture there anymore, or the building is sold, or the license agreement changes, that there's, it reverts back to either another sculpture or going back to a tree, so.
So if it helps at all, as I review the particular provisions of the agreement, there is language that says, "The licensee and its contractor shall be responsible for fully restoring the plaza and landscape planter to their original condition." There's another section that says, "A sculpture base meeting the design and safety standards identified by the city manager, or their designee, shall be installed in the landscape planter." And there's language that, "The licensee shall install replacement landscaping in the landscape planter within 90 days, provided however that they shall submit a landscape plan for review and approval." So I, I think there's sufficient latitude within the agreement language. It's not attaching the exhibits as, as binding, as much as reference, and my interpretation would be, they do have to replace the planter, either repair it or replace it to its original condition. The sculpture base is subject to approval by the city manager, and the landscaping is a plan to be submitted, subject to approval by the, the city forester. So I think we've got enough latitude to adjust bases and landscaping.
Okay, any other questions? Are there any comments from the public?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, Jeff Mace, Compor Realty, I'm here on behalf of JKS K. One question that I would have for you, because we did meet a tree guy out there last Thursday or Friday to make sure that we didn't come for you in the planter, and there's, he said, "Oh no, we can do it." Now there's, now there were some other questions about, are we going to tear that planter up, getting that tree out, because the base is being what it is? And it's not cutting the tree down, it's grinding the stump out, so we can come back with concrete to, to create the base for the sculpture. One of my questions for you all is, how married are you to the planter? If we're going to have the, it is our intention, and Jason, the owner of JKS K, wants to leave it there, because he thinks it's a place that, you know, his clients can sit on the patio, you know, if they're waiting for a table and go outside and the tables are full. So there's that functionality of it. I, if, if we tear it up, can we just go to a base similar to what we see on Santa Fe, and, you know, where, where we have these sculptures there, or is the plan or something that's critical for you in your decision? Kind of the two questions. Tree, can we, we can agree it comes out or it doesn't, we're going to replace it with sculpture. I'm just concerned, being in front of you now, that if we do tear that planter up, the idea maybe that we come back with something smaller to house the sculpture? Or is that, is that, is that a showstopper?
Looking at the pictures of this planter, and my question would be why it's not being rebuilt, to begin with. I mean, I would think the plan should be to take it out when you get the stump out and just rebuild it. I mean, because it, there's a lot of cracks, and it, it doesn't look like it from the far away picture, but close up, it looks like you're going to be repairing that for a pretty good while.
In a normal environment, and I think the forester said this to the contractor, was, you know, the city would normally take, take that down. It's the, it's a city's tree that's overgrown, that's busted up the planter and all of that, and, you know, now we're saying, you incur all the cost of taking the tree down and rebuilding the planter and all of that, when it's, all that's really city property. So we're open to it. I just don't want to, I don't want to, if we get in there and we tear it all up, then what? By grinding the stump?
I guess that's a good question, kind of falls along mine about the size of the, of the base. What is our, what is our recourse if that base would be damaged further?
If you have to restore it back to the way it was, should you decide to, you know, move away at some point, you could argue that the planter has to be rebuilt then.
I mean, it's- If you're moved, if the, if it's a hard stop, that the planter would just come out, and we would just have a sculpture be in that patio area, then that's what it is, and we have to, you know, we'll respond accordingly. If you're not terribly married to that planter, the intention is to save it, but if it does get busted up, we would just take it out and have just a sculpture in that patio area, independent of the planter. In that plaza, there's, there's probably at least three other of those six-by-six hexagon planters, so. I don't, you guys had a long, long meeting, we don't need to belabor the point too much. I just, in the name of being transparent, I've had two opinions. One, no problem, we can get it. Two, hmm, not sure, once we've gotten that stump.
Well, I think if that's what we're going to do, we probably need some more flexibility in the license agreement, depending on the-
That's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking, yeah.
Right. If, and that's your prerogative, but if that's the direction you want ahead, I don't think this agreement's ready for action today. I think you're going to-
I'm sorry, I think that's a new information that Mr. Mace brought to the table, because-
I just don't want to tell you we're going to, you know, you know.
Well, I would have been kind of surprised you got a, got a stump out, leaving the planter with all these cracks in it, together, but-
They're building the-
On the other hand, I don't walk through there very often, so I really can't tell you from personal experience how much the planter enhances the area.
You know, I, I did go look at it, and the, the most severe crack is on the one side, and it's, these are close-up pictures, when you look at it from a little ways off. From some perspectives, the planter looks fine. If you get around on the side of the building and look at it, and there was some construction material there when I was there, but if you move that a little bit, you can see this one crack is the most extensive, and there are a few other, what I characterize as hairline cracks in the other parts of the planter. So this is the primary problem. It's only one, maybe two cracks on that side that are, are an issue.
Do you think the planter's elemental to the aesthetic of the area that the developer's trying to create there? Don McLean, you know, if, if a pedestal's there, a piece of art, that's a nice feature. We table it and let the staff figure out how to make the planter go away.
I'm, I'm partial to the planter. I just think that having something green there would be nice, but to Mr. Mace's point, there are other planters in the vicinity that are very visible from the dining area that are, you know, you know.
And a statue might be an aesthetic pickup that's even more substantial than the other planter.
I, I get that.
My concern is, I'm, you know, I understand trying to save the planter, but I guess the question is, if something happens, then we have a license agreement that's not valid. That's my concern.
Yeah, I, I totally agree.
Yeah, I mean-
If they were sitting there all looking at each other going, "Well, that's not what we intended," and, and I don't know how we address that, and the fact that the intention is to save the planter, but if by chance, something happens, because-
Is that our usual procedure, if we remove a tree to replace it with something else that's living and growing?
I think not necessarily, like with downtown, and when we've been looking-
I think not necessarily, like with downtown and when we've been looking at the plazas, you know, looking at that over street, overall streetscape and ambiance and trying to find a balance. I think in this plaza, you know, it's bringing a sculpture, sculpture where we haven't had one before, but there is additional greenery in the area. I think there are two questions before you. It's not just replace and repair of the concrete planter. That's one question. The other is complete removal. And, and are you okay with staying with that? Because, I mean, we can make minor adjustments to the license agreement to deal with cracks, damages, concrete planter, or replace at the owner's expense, but to, to remove it and keep it gone is really the one thing we don't address in here.
And just to clarify, not, you can decide what your preference is, but there's two sections in the language currently. The licensee shall repair the existing cracks and damage to the concrete planter at the licensee's whole cost and expense. And they shall be fully responsible, they shall be responsible for fully restoring the plaza and landscape planner to their original condition following removal of the tree. So if the question is what happened, you know, in the process of removing the tree, the planter completely falls apart, I think the agreement language says currently, the licensee agreement, he needs to put that back. Now, if you wanna go in a different direction, you can provide that, that guidance to staff, but that would take revising this language.
Just keep it the way it is for me, but again, I mean, I've been down there, but I guess I just assumed it was gonna be there. We weren't, as a city, in a rush to remove the tree. I mean, it does give shade. Man, I wanna walk under it, but.
Well, the forester did.
The tree was not slated for removal previously?
Uh, well, I think the forester, one of the things that he noted was, the plaza was kind of put on hold compared to all of the others because we knew additional work was being done in there. But he has acknowledged that it has outgrown that planter. So with that, I mean, we may have done something in the future. That's not exactly clear.
So in a situation like that, would the forester routinely replace it with a different tree or type of vegetation, or recommend it just be removed?
We would've probably replaced it with something. I mean, looking at the landscaping that's been put in throughout the rest of downtown, trying to find something that matches that aesthetic. Not necessarily a tree, though. I think that would've been up to discussion with parks.
Admittedly, increased traffic would call increased attention to the condition of the tree, the planter, and the droppings that we've not had to address currently because there hasn't been a lot of activity back there.
Is it, is it possible for, for the commission to give direction to staff and then we just work with staff on the language, you know, and say we, if we're married to the planter, we're married to the planter. If you don't care if it gets beat, it's, it's the intention for it to remain. I just don't wanna be here and then get beat up and now, you know, so. And that's why I'm just asking the question. If it's something that you're, it's a hard stop, then it is. And if not, we can get the tree out of there and do the best we can.
And if you're willing to take, and I'm gonna look at Greg for a minute. If you're willing to take a five or 10 minute break, I could get with Greg and we could look at a possible language amendment. I just, I didn't have one prepared, not knowing, so.
That would be good, because I would like to address it, but I think we need to address the, the possibility that does get damaged beyond repair. It's not that, it's not a real attractive base because it's got some wear on it. I mean.
It addresses that already, though.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, the current way that it addresses it is it says it needs to be put back in its original condition. If you're entertaining that it just goes away, it does not allow that possibility at the moment.
I don't imagine you can pull up one of those Google map pictures of back there?
I looked, the aerial mapping, all you see is tree covers and there's not a street view on the backside of that alley.
Thanks for trying.
Okay. Can we take a, is five minutes enough?
So if I could, though.
Look at Greg, because.
Number one, if we can, we need consensus from you as a governing body as to what direction you want to go. So if we're headed that route, my suggestion would be that you make a motion and approve it to provide staff guidance to try to pull this together at a break, if that's your inclination.
To borrow a phrase from Dr. Franz, this is not a hill I'm gonna die on, but I like green stuff that grows, even if it's not a tree, but I would.
On, on the other hand, I'm worried, in fact, there are other planters in the vicinity and it's not like this is the only bit of greenery there is. I would like to keep the greenery there, but I can also see that a sculpture, whether or not it is surrounded by greenery, would also be, you know, an update to the plaza. To be honest with you, this existing planter, I have to be careful of my language here. Use something, it looks, is not the most attractive thing I've seen, you know. Mr. Mase, you're smiling beneath your mask, I can tell. The, you know, so it, if it goes away, it's not going to, I'm not gonna have my feelings hurt by it, but, you know.
I think what I would like to see is that we stay within 10 of the li, the license agreement and, and save the planter if possible, but have something in there that if it gets damaged, that we don't have to go through the expense of repairing it. We can come up with, with something.
So provide a, an out for that eventuality in the license agreement?
Yeah.
So language that would modify the license agreement that would provide for an option if the planter does get destroyed while removing the tree.
Can we talk timeline a minute? That, that guidance is helpful. In the normal course of things, staff would take that, we'd bring you back, we'd have to produce a draft in two days, two and a half days, to then distribute it to you for next Monday. What is the timeline?
We're ready to cut it down and go. I mean, he's trying to get, the fence is on order. Just a quick update, they installed the floor last week. I mean, they're getting close to going, but, I mean, I don't know that it's a, I just don't know if it warrants coming back for them. That's why I was saying, if we can work with staff on the language, if you guys give direction, that way you can move on.
What the direction they're gonna give is, will have to be an amendment to the agreement for them to act on. So to be able to do it at the staff level, the authority's not there.
Okay, gotcha. I was unaware.
If it's not that time sensitive, I think the easier approach, and they will have a better likelihood of success if we get some direction from you and we bring it back to you next Monday.
So we could postpone under three, postpone this till next week for additional language based on what we've discussed? Would that, you think that would be?
This isn't a, this isn't a life or death situation. So if it's.
It is for the tree.
Next week, not this week, it doesn't change anything. So, yeah, deal with the tree.
So my hearing that the language of the amendment would basically say if the planter is damaged beyond repair, then a pedestal for a statue would be acceptable.
And its replacement.
What kind of detail we need on the pedestal or the base that would.
Any expectation of landscaping along with that sculpture base?
Well, that's what I was just getting ready to ask.
I wouldn't worry about landscaping.
What I might offer for y'all is, if you look at the landscape plan, inside the fence, up against the building, there's two planter areas that there's gonna be green space in it. And then right on the other side of the fence where the grease trap went, is a very large planter. It's lower. It's not the, it's not the tree planter, it's lower, but there's gonna be a lot of green space and trees in it that we're having to add back now that we've got the grease interceptor or interceptor in there. So just for maybe Commissioner, your gratification, there's gonna be a lot of green stuff back there. And then everything else that's in the plaza, because there's two or three other planting, planters and trees and stuff in that plaza, so.
Most of our pedestals downtown now have vegetation around the bases or in that? They're just.
No.
Most of them are just free standing.
Standalone.
They're six by six, which is interesting. They're six by six concrete pad. I went and took some photos of those to see with how they compare it on Santa Fe. And they're just a standalone.
And there's nothing, would be nothing around it just to, or are you encouraging people to come up and touch it? Or is there anything around it to reduce the likelihood of?
I think it would look very much like what you see on Santa Fe today. You know, all those, all those pedestals. Again, the intent is to, to leave the planter because Jason would like to have that as a place for folks to sit and, you know, on the, on the, so. This, taking up a lot of your time for a hypothetical, maybe, I apologize for that, because.
It's easier to do now than afterwards.
Yeah.
I'm glad you brought it up because I wondered about that, so.
Because it may, we may get it out of there and not have any trouble. I just, it was mentioned, if it gets beat up, maybe we just go back with the, with the sculpture. And I'm like, no, that's different than what we've talked about. So that's why I brought it up.
So I'll take a stab at it. I would move that we direct the staff to work out an exit strategy in the event the planter is damaged while removing the tree and bring that back to us next week, next Monday?
Sure.
Okay.
And I guess that would be, fall under number three, postpone consideration of the resolution and with, with your recommendations, correct?
That would be correct.
Okay.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to postpone consideration of resolution number 20-7862 with us to be brought back next week based on direction given to staff by the commission.
Oh, that's 7863, I think. Oh, I'm sorry. I turned the page.
Okay, a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we will address this next week. Thank you, Mr. Mase, for bringing that to our attention so we're not, it's easier to do now than after the fact, so thank you. Okay, that will bring us to 7.4.
Item 7.4, resolution number 20-7863, accepting a grant and providing a grant agreement with the Kansas Department of Commerce for a 2020 Kansas Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus and authorizing the mayor to execute the grant agreement and associated implementation and administrative documents.
Mr. Skol.
Yes, so we are back discussing the CDBG CV program. This is special monies set forth. We have participated in CDBG or Community Development Block Grant programs before. Usually it's project based. This is coronavirus related, that these additional monies are being put back into Kansas communities in two types of areas. Economic development, which is basically microloans for small businesses, and then meal programs, which is basically reimbursement or small loans to meal programs, such as Meals on Wheels, food banks, things like that. We did apply for both types of funding. Many communities didn't. For instance, Saline County did not. They only applied for the economic development funds. We did first apply for these dollars in May of 2020, what is now referred to as round one, and did not get funded at that time. The state took an approach of first come, first served and did that second, and they've now received a second allotment of money and are doing a second round. Through that second round, we have been awarded, we were informed of that on July 27th, 2020. We have been awarded $169,200. That is not our full request, but we had no reason to not ask for the full amount, and that was $400,000. And that could be attributed to both the economic development and meal programs. Looking at the list the state produced, nobody else got that maximum amount. We're pretty much in the normal amount that was issued for other communities of our size around Kansas. Saline County was also awarded. Unlike us, they did, or they did not get the money in round one like us, and in round two, were awarded, they were awarded $132,000. They, as I mentioned, did not apply for the food funding. So our additional funds are primarily addressing the food funding. So we've applied, we are now awarded, and we need to sign our grant agreements. Probably the most recent CDBG project we did, and where some of these things may seem familiar, is with the Train Depot renovation off of Santa Fe. So we have been sent a contract that needs to be signed, that's contract 20-CV-112, that would put us in contract with the state to receive these monies and administer them as directed by the state. We have also included a contract for North Central Regional Planning Commission to assist us in administering this grant. It's quite typical in a normal CDBG environment to have a trained and certified CDBG administrator either administering or assisting with the administration of that. We do not have any certified CDBG administrators on staff here at the city and have historically used North Central Regional Planning Commission for their assistance. CDBGs bring a lot of money to communities, a lot of boots-on-the-ground kind of money, but they are a lot of work. And particularly some of the upfront certification type work. In this case, it's certifying the small businesses that will apply. Both their employees will be, need to be certified for LMI or low to moderate income, along with several numbers related to the finances of that business in order to be able to receive the funding. The meal programs as well will need LMI certifications. The programs and services that they're doing need to be impacting census tracts within Salina, which we have identified previously, that are low to moderate income census tracts. So there's quite a bit of verification. And even to kind of get the applications in, verify them, and start getting the money out the door, a lot of that upfront work needs to be done. So that is why staff is suggesting we do work with them as an administrator. The grant and its budget allows for $15,000 or about 9% of our award amount to help with administration costs. So that has been identified. I, I, I think, I, I have been kind of grappling with the administration of this. I know these dollars are really important, but it will be helpful to have North Central Regional Planning Commission, because beyond getting through verification, even the monthly and quarterly receipt reimbursements that will need to be submitted will be quite a challenge. These are, many of the counties have gotten, you know, out of, let's say, 20 applicants or cities, you know, only five or six have been able to qualify, even though they've applied because of the rules that are within this. I think one of the highest numbers I've heard of is 10. But that's 10 different entities that we kind of need to keep an eye on and make sure they're getting their stuff in and verifying and doing all of that work. So in, in this particular grant, I do think the administration component is going to be very important. Also, North Central Regional Planning Commission has been part of round one in helping our neighboring communities to administer these funds. Much of this is kind of made on the fly. I mean, it's hard to remember some, that sometimes that this pandemic is really like a disaster and we have a lot of emergency money that needs to get out. And the time to write all these rules and regulations and all these details are not really out there, but the objective is to get the money out there. So they're using known programs like CDBG to get the money to us, but there's still quite a bit of gap. So having an organization that's done round one has been able and has helped us to see different applications already, ones that the state has approved, which is helpful. Our goal is to get the economic development application out there this week. So if you remember when we did the emergency services or emergency solutions grant just a few weeks ago, we did a website under the featured items. We had information there, the attachments, and you were able to apply online. We will do something very similar for this grant. So we'll do a press release, we'll do social media notification, we'll get that information out there, and they'll be able to go to a website to be able to apply and get that information turned in. We plan to do a three to four week, I'm gonna probably lean towards four, it's a nice even number, four week time for people to get their information submitted. State Department of Commerce has been saying three to four is normal. There's enough information by the time you pull it all together. It takes a little bit. Plus, we wanna make sure there's enough time to get the information out there. Then, once those are in, we would have to go through those, verify those, and see which applications are actually able to, and of course, we're giving them information upfront that says, you know, these things will need to be verified, but we will need to go through that to make sure that they do truly qualify. Once we have that known total number that are qualified, staff suggestion is to take the lump sum and divide it equally amongst, amongst those applications that are viable and able to follow the regulations here. I, I think we talked a little bit about when we looked at applying for this and the idea of using some type of criteria and a scoring method based on the impact or number of jobs saved and a variety of other things. From a staff perspective, and one of the reasons we're recommending this is there is a lot of money coming at us right now, both between the CARES dollar and the Spark Committee, between ESG and this grant. I think in order to be able to administer it correctly, fairly, and keep everybody on the up and up, it is much easier to just say, if you qualify, we take as many as we can and qualify, and we equally divide that money. When I've asked other communities who have already started to do this, that is what they are indicating. And none of them have, and I can't, if we come back and I got 20 that qualify and we gotta figure something out, I can't say that I'm not gonna come back to you, we need to have a further conversation. But looking at it at this moment and looking at what our neighbors are doing, they're not getting so many applications that qualify that equally dividing isn't working. not getting so many applications that qualify that equally dividing isn't working. And, and it's, it's a way that it makes it possible for them to administer the grant I did look at, there is one community that's got a scoring criteria, it was quite, quite complex, and that would be a whole nother discussion if you want to go down that route of how would you score, what is important. So that, that is definitely an option when we get to, you know, postpone this, we want to get into more, but at this point, we're recommending equal division amongst those. And the county hasn't made their decision, but they did approve their grant contract, I believe at their last meeting. The meals program is a little less known. Like I said, a lot of communities didn't apply for those dollars, and it is the one with kind of the least regulation or least kind of known components from the state at this point. We know that previous expenses can be dealt with, we know LMI is critical. So with that, staff's been working with North Central Regional Planning Commission and would like to push out and have the meal program application go live the week of 8/24. That would give us some time to get the economic development stuff out there, rolling, and come up with an application, and get things set up for the meal program. I can tell you that the entities that we talked to who run meal programs for the application are aware of the award, so they know this is coming. We would, of course, advertise and go to the same length that we did for the economic development monies, but, in a similar process, but trying to get the application set up and just figuring out a few more details I'm sure are going to be asked by those applicants from the state would be ideal. Really, once those all start to come in, there's the review and the eligibility verification that goes with each one of those, and that's that economic breakdown related to overall financials of the businesses and their employees and how they qualify under LMI. We talked about allocation. I would suggest the equal division also among meal program applications that do qualify. If we get three, then it's divided amongst the three. There is a maximum allowed amount of money that can be awarded, so let's say somehow we only had two applicants. They, they may over, if we took that whole amount and divided it in half, it will exceed the maximum amount allocated or allowed through the grant. So what we noted in here was that they would be able to just get the maximum amount that they requested. Managing quarterly reporting for all awardees, that is something that staff's kind of working on the background with. We've done some similar procedures in the past with North Central Regional Planning Commission, but I'm really hoping, really, really hoping to maybe do something with seamless docs and have a spot that people can input their receipts, input their certifications, so it comes to staff, and we can do more of a workflow on the back end of that, because there's quite a bit of back and forth by the time we heard all that paperwork, get it to finance, get it to the state, to get, to get verification, to get a check cut, there's a lot of moving pieces there. So as much as we can streamline that, I am hopeful for. And then grant closeout is typical with the CDBG, you know, we'll have to do notification and additional information like we have with the train depot and other CDBGs we've had in the past. Under the fiscal note, there is no identified city expense outside of your known staff's time. There's money set aside in the grant for additional administration help, and there is no match required. That's also quite different. In past CDBGs, outside of the coronavirus, there is a match requirement. So with that, you have and are able to, option one, approve resolution 20-7863, approving a grant agreement at Kansas Department of Commerce for a 2020 Kansas Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus and authorizing the mayor to execute the grant agreement and associated implementation and administration documents. Two, approve the resolution with amendments as the city commission deems appropriate or postpone consideration of the resolution to a specified date and time, provide guidance, or decline to approve resolution resulting in the city of Salina not approving a grant agreement at Kansas Department of Commerce for the 2020 Kansas Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus and authorizing the mayor to execute those associated documents.
And I have one question, maybe I missed it. What, the 169,2, what dollars go to economic development and what dollars go to the meal program? Did I?
Yes, there should be.
It's back in the material somewhere, but.
There is a budget.
But I think I missed it somewhere.
I found it by accident.
It is, so right under attachments, number four, grant budget, you'll see economic development has been allocated $119,200. Meal programs is $35,000.
And we have no flexibility in that? If we had, if we had additional entities that needed the, the food dollars, there's no moving back and forth?
No.
Okay.
These, these, they're two distinct types of monies, and, yeah.
I'm Carol with the North Central Regional Planning Commission. You do have the flexibility of, you can ask for a budget amendment. If we can't spend all the business dollars, we could ask for a budget amendment to put more money in the meal program if it's necessary. This is just, they did a formula based on how they distributed those across the state, and I think most of the meal programs probably got about $35,000, and the rest went into the economic development, because they weren't, they didn't fully fund any of the grant requests that they received.
And it's all based on them approving it? I mean, we can always ask.
Right.
Yeah.
So we can ask, we don't know if they would allow us to move the money, but it, it would be something that we could.
Because of the requirements, have you seen that the food dollars have come up short, or have they been sufficient to?
Actually, of the ones that we're administering, we only have two that have meal programs, the city of Salina and the city of Marysville, and they were both funded in the second round, so.
So we don't know.
Yeah. We don't have, we don't have any experience with that at this point.
Well, and I can tell you when applying, that was probably where the questions were hardest for the state to answer when I called and asked different questions. What has kind of been reinforced to me is you need to be able to link it to the LMI area, and that's why a lot of communities didn't go after this, these funds, because it's not always easy to do that. But we knew that we had providers who could say, I dropped off a meal here, and I can tell you that that census tract is already verified as LMI, and that address belongs in it. And that makes it possible for this to be applicable.
If you have programs vastly different sizes, you know, where their needs would be disproportionate, if you have equal distributions, the smaller operations would get more than what, I'm going to say more than what they would need, but is there a limit based on their own budget as to what percentage of expenses, whatever they can ask for?
Well, they are going to have to provide expenses, and then they have to show proof that they've made payment on that. So if they, if it's small enough that they cannot, wouldn't be able to use their portion, then, then we would need to make adjustment at that point.
Let's say if, if you divided the meals in thirds, that would be, but 17, I'm sorry, 11,000, almost 12,000 apiece. If one group only needed 5,000, and you only had three applicants, but another group is a much bigger program, could you then shift that 5,000 even?
What I can tell you.
Though you said you're going to do it equally, can you later shift the money?
What I can tell you is, we're going to need to know upfront before you award to any of those entities, because once they receive any money, they can't receive anymore. So that will be something that we'll work with those, to have them tell us in a budget format how much they need, and that may help us decide how those dollars are going to be awarded.
Right, because my concern was with the deciding to award applicants equal amounts, and was that just for the economic development or for meals as well?
No, it would be for them in their entirety. What we have been seeing with other municipalities is if you're, let's say, one entity asks for like $2,000, it's, it's not a lot. I think it's what Carol's saying, is you have to be able to be reimbursed, but you have others allocating for larger amounts of money, is getting the smaller ones paid if you did an equal division, that they could be paid, but they didn't really need all of that equal division, that, that remaining sum is then divided against the ones that do need that greater amount of money.
So you can come back later and redistribute.
We would need to know prior to awarding to that business or that they have the qualifying expenses for the amount of money that they are.
So it's not a hard, everybody has to get the same amount?
No.
Okay.
But I know one of the things that, coming into this, and this is not always the easiest spot for staff to be at, is we, we kind of got to just push through this a little. There are a lot of unknowns, so the approach that we've been seeing everybody take is get this stuff in and really figure out what you've got that's even qualifying, because it's, there aren't a lot of comparables. And remember that to get these funds, it, it didn't go to Wichita and some of those other bigger communities. So we're one of the bigger fishes in this pond who got some of these monies, and trying to find the right way to do that. And, I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable if, city manager's comfortable of even getting the applications, getting them verified, knowing what we have, and coming back with an award process. And I think we can say in our public outreach, look, these are the maximum amount possible, this is what you need to qualify, but the city commission will need to finalize, you know, those applications and how that money is divided.
Kind of like that, just the idea of having a predetermined equal amount when you don't know what organizations will need, just, there'd be some money left over in some areas and some folks with very deserving programs who could justify the higher reimbursement wouldn't get it.
I mean, it'll put a little bit more length on things, we'll have to come back, we'll have to approve, but for staff, it's been very difficult to say, this is the way, this will work perfectly, there's no reason to come back, because there's just a lot of unknowns. I mean, you, and what Carol's saying is, you're going to have one application that needs $2,000, you may have one that wants $30,000, but I think it's equally difficult, and I'm not always in this camp, but I think in this case, it's going to be equally difficult to go, okay, for instance, the one scoring mechanism I saw that was used in another community, how sustainable is this business? Would you give them a loan? I don't know if we're, if, if we want to get down to that level.
Well, it depends also on what services they have provided. I mean, they may have been the lifeblood organization for a lot of the city during the last six months, so they may truly qualify for it.
Well, but I think that qualifying for it and then going through that process, though, of deciding who would be on a panel to score and grade those applications based on some type of matrix, there is, we've done that with other grants, and if that's where we need to go, we are adding weeks to you guys choosing who would be on that, because I don't think, based on what we just did with Spark Money, that that's necessarily all city employees, that we'd have to decide who's on that panel, what does that scoring criteria look like, getting those scores and approving them that way.
All right, but if you have money that's left over and you can come back and redistribute, then that solves that problem.
So staff's recommendation at this point would be, let's get this grant application out, let's get these applications in, let's get them verified, let's see that what we have that is eligible, and we would come back to you showing that breakdown in an equal representation. If we have some that are small, 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 trying to get those paid out and then equally dividing amongst the rest, and allowing you guys to, to approve that before we issued those funds.
I would add one thing. The, we don't want to overcomplicate, it's already complicated in terms of, especially on the economic development side, being a qualifying business, you have to demonstrate that 51% of your employees meet the low to moderate income level. So it's not just a geographic location, now we're into employee demographics. So we don't want to overcomplicate it, but rather than equal, what I would say is equitable. I mean, we, we may look at a five employee employer differently than a 50 employee employer. We may look at a food program and the number of people it serves, but I think the overall point is, we want to take all applications, verify their eligibility, and then see if staff can come up with an equitable distribution and bring it back to you for your consideration.
That's the magic word. Thank you. At least for me it is.
Thank you for your input.
Thanks, Carol.
Any other questions? Any comments from the public? If not, I will bring it back to the commission for action.
And approving the resolution would include the equitable, that doesn't have to be added?
This action's really just entering into the agreement on the grant and, and North Central Regional Planning's administration, and when we get through that process, we'll be back.
All right. Mayor, move approval of resolution number 20-7863.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 20-7863. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that will lead us to 7.5, June 30, 2020, financial update.
Mayor, I think we've been in continuous meetings from about 2:15, it would be possible to take a five-minute recess.
Let's make it, yeah, we'll be back, let's make it like seven, right, we'll be back here at 6:15.
Sounds good.
Thank you, sir.